We're now reconvening as Wycomico County Council for a work session for November 4th, The first item on the agenda for the open work session is the redistricting of councilmanic districts. Thankfully, we have Mr. Kevin Karpinski here on the Zoom meeting to give us some advice together with Mr. McKenzie and Mr. Wilber. I think what I will do, Mr. Karpinski, I'll yield to you to begin the discussion unless you would rather have Frank and Mr. Wilber go first.
Thank you, Council President Cannon. I think I can just give a brief overview. As the council will recall, a suit was filed by the ACOU and NAACP and others challenging that large succeeds in Wycomico County. The council elected, decided to go to seven council districts, and a number of maps were put forward. They believe they had a sort of map out, minority-majority districts and five other districts. That map was available, was approved by all parties involved, and was ultimately submitted to the court pursuant to a consent decree and was approved. Thereafter, and I assume recently, the Board of Elections has begun looking at the map itself and trying to configure its precincts that would have the councilmanic districts and the legislative districts match up, which has to occur after every redistricting. You know, every 10 years, we go through this exercise to make sure that the councilmanic and legislative districts match up. You also have to make sure that the Board of Education lines match up, but they're coextensive with the councilmanic districts, so that's really not an issue. What the Board of Elections has found is that in six precincts, they are having difficulty having the councilmanic district and the legislative district be the same that would be on the ballot. And what that has created is some very small precincts. And for example, there are, in one precinct, 27 voters, another 20, another 19, another three, another four, and then there's apparently one where Mr. McKenzie received an email that's very small as well this afternoon. So, the problem, of course, is that in Maryland, we have gone to precinct-based voting and precinct-based results. So while the ballot style itself may be the same in two precincts, you can tie that ballot to a particular precinct. And when you only have three voters in a particular precinct, you have compromised the secrecy of one's vote. So what needs to occur moving forward is, there needs to be, and I don't think this is a major lift, but there needs to be a minor adjustment to the map itself and to some of the precincts that, as they're currently configured, to make them larger. Because if they're not larger, then we compromise the secrecy of one's vote. I have had conversations with the attorney, Mr. Cockey, who represented the Board of Elections in the lawsuit, and he has spoken with the State Board of Elections attorney. Everyone seems to agree that this minor amendment that would enlarge some of the precincts to protect the privacy or secrecy of one's vote, everyone seems to be in agreement to do it. It's now just a matter of working through the mechanics of making the minor amendments that would be necessary to do that. And so what would need to occur is, the Board of Elections will need to figure out exactly how the precincts will be configured. A new map will need to be presented to the county council for approval. And once that has been approved, then a motion to modify the consent decree would need to be filed for the court to approve the new map that would be in place. And then I guess the final step in this process would be for the county charter to be consistent with the new councilmanic map, there would need to be a charter amendment that would address the change in the map that had been previously approved by the council. So that's kind of where we are. Obviously, making the changes to the map to make the precincts larger is the first step. It needs to be done fairly quickly because we need to get a new map to be presented to the county council in fairly short order with obviously a candidate filing deadline in late February. I don't think it's going to be a significant change in the map that was previously approved, but it's certainly going to require council action to approve the modifications that are being requested by both the Wycomico County Board of Elections and the State Board of Elections, who has weighed in that they're very concerned that these small precincts are going to be problematic because of the way election results are reported in the state of Maryland. That's sort of an overview of where we are. In terms of the council's role in all of this, obviously, the council was heavily involved in the litigation and making some very difficult decisions to go to seven districts. In terms of the council's role in connection with this, I think it's just simply approving the map. The rest of the work is going to need to be done either by the attorney for the Board of Elections and/or the State Board of Elections to get the map approved and the consent decree modified by Judge Maddox, who was the, and still is, the United States District Court Judge that presided over the litigation and continues to have jurisdiction over the case until 2030. So that's sort of an overview of where we are. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Mr. Karpinski, you had made the comment that, once the council, if the council were to approve it tonight, that this matter would then go, would have to be, then the charter would have to be changed, if I heard you correctly. I thought this was going to be revisited with the judges, and it would be a judge's decree to make these changes just as they had agreed on the initial maps.
Well, you're correct. I mean, once, actually, these, I mean, some of these technicalities have not been worked out, so we're not in a position to present a map to the county, a final map to the county council tonight. But yes, then it would need to be approved. And from what I understood from Mr. Wilber, and Mr. Wilber can correct me, that obviously the judge's order amending the map would be controlling, but for purposes of conforming the charter to the map, that there would need to be a charter amendment. And if I'm incorrect in that regard, Mr. Wilber, please correct me.
Yeah, I think a resolution, a straight resolution rather than a charter resolution will take care of it.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Straight, okay, straight resolution would do it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Karpinski. Does anyone have questions for Mr. Karpinski before we move on with Mr. McKenzie and Mr. Wilber? All right, Mr. McKenzie, I'll give you the floor, and you guys can discuss it.
I think Frank can show the council where these little changes are, if the council would like to see it up on the screen, just for informational purposes.
Well, good evening. Thanks, let me be here to explain what we're proposing. I will say, as Mr. Karpinski mentioned, there's a late change to the request from the Board of Elections. Previously, they requested five areas. We did an analysis of those five areas. Now, they, excuse me, they've identified one more area that they'd like to consider to move. It's a small area, if it's what I think it is. You know, she gave me some numbers, but I don't know where, exactly where they're on the map. But it won't take long to figure out, once I get with the Board of Elections, to determine exactly, you know, what she's proposing to do. Given that, how do we get where we are? When we adopted the map back in February of this year, you know, we were looking at total population of the county. When we did this, we divided the county population by, in this case, we went to seven districts, divided it by seven, come up with seven council districts that are near equal population. Two of those districts needed to be minority-majority population. That means the black population had to be greater than white, and this is mandated by the federal state law. So we did that. We identified District One and District Three to be the minority-majority districts. So that information was provided, you know, adopted by the council. We provide that information to the Board of Elections. Their next step is to look at that and start looking at legislative districts and these old historic election districts. And they overlay all these things, and these create new blocks of land, these become the precincts. So when they look at this, they're looking at the voting, registered voters of these areas. So in some of these cases, you know, where I would show, in a district, I might have a total population of 45, but they've got 20 registered voters. In some cases, there was, I had 30, she had 19 registered voters. We're dealing with the census data, and this all happened during the pandemic. So there were some issues getting information back. In one case, one of the areas she identified, she had three registered voters, the census data had zero population for that. So this is the data we had to work with. There wasn't much difference here, but you know, there are small errors we had to deal with. All in all, you know, I could go through all the maps, and I will if you want me to, but there were a total of 73 voters who were moved from one district to another. The total population of these districts was 113 people. There were, the white population was 52, the black population was 27. And the five districts she initially proposed, we went from a minority-majority population in District One from 53.01% to a 53.22%. In District Three, they went from a 53.34 to a 53.35. So all of these were improving the percentage of the minority district. Now I'm going to try to go through the maps here.
Mr. McKenzie, you made the comment that they've all of a sudden given you a few more numbers to deal with. Does that mean that the maps that you have prepared tonight are all, will be pretty much all invalid, or will it just be?
Well, there'll be one area that needs to be considered.
Okay, okay.
So I've done five, now there's six. The area that she's, they proposed has 12 voters registered, and if it's what I think it is, I think there's about 27 people, according to census, living in those areas. But I haven't checked it five times, which I would do before we adopt something. So we'd like more time to verify and work with them.
This is all based off the last census?
Yes, the 2020 census.
So all the people that are moving into the county, it's?
Yeah, we don't, you know, we're sure that the population is growing, but we don't know where they're going.
Okay.
So we just have to use the 2020 census that, you know, was approved and has been evaluated, you know, since 2021. So this map you see here is a map that was adopted. You can see there's seven districts. Each color represents a different district. So this map is the same map, and you can see the areas in red, they're small, they're identified as A, B, C, D, and E. And they are generally located in the center of the county. This is an enlargement of the center of the county, and shows a little better detail as where those changes are. Now I've gone through and done an enlargement of each district. And I could go through each of the statistics for each of these things if you'd like, but I probably will not give you all the details that are involved here. But we did an analysis of each precinct, gave the number of registered voters, the total number of people who are living there, according to the census data, the population, the white population moved, and the black population moved, and for which district they're being moved to. And this was done for each of the five areas that were previously identified. Remind my screen here a little bit. There we go. This is another one of the districts out near the landfill. Here is one down off Marine Road. This is the one where there were three registered voters, but census had zero.
That does open itself up for a really good joke, you realize that, don't you? As to what party those three people might be.
And I think I know these people, but I won't go into that. This is over near Church Street. This is an area out near the bypass, and this is an area that they proposed to move District, in this case, District Four to District Six. Now, this is, these are the population summaries that we evaluated back in 2022. And this is what was adopted. And you can see, we've got the total population as shown on here, down here. And then you get down to, you know, the number of black population, the number of white population, and the percentage of black population. In this case, you can see District One was 53.01, District Three was 53.34. This is the revised analysis of 50, District One is going from 53.01 to 53.22, and District Three is going from 53.34 to 53.35. So each of these maps that I went through, you know, I can give you more detail if you like, but I think generally.
Summary of the adjustments.
What you've seen is, the adjustment they requested resulted in an increase in the minority-majority population of the districts.
Question, Josh.
Just to add on to that, too, it's, I think for anyone listening to this, they might say, oh, you're trying to change the map, the districts, and you just set these, you know, that smells a little bit, it's fishy, you know, like, what's happening there? But to be clear, this is, none of these districts are even statistically significant of a change. It is, out of 107,000 people you're talking about, less than 100.
Yes.
And, yeah, so not that many districts, just trying to make, fix a technical error, essentially, is that, that wasn't of our fault, but thanks to the federal government and their great census data, we are having to rely on that.
Housekeeping.
And trying to protect, you know, the. Housekeeping, yeah, well said, yeah.
You know, protect the information about, we don't want to know who the person voted for.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's the secrecy of the ballot.
Yeah, we don't want any precincts that are free people in there. Yeah, yeah.
Right.
We appreciate the maps, Frank, because it's, it's a lot for the short amount of time you had to prepare it, so we do appreciate that. Mr. Wilber, I guess, where will we go from here? Because I have 100% confidence in what Mr. McKenzie is putting together, and of course, it's also being approved by the Board of Elections, so that speaks for itself. Where are we now? Are we, in two weeks, do we have something to re-review and to vote on?
Yeah, that's what I'm hoping, you know. As you've heard, there was a change that came this afternoon, so hopefully the changes are all found now.
Will that give us enough time, and Mr. Karpinski, enough time to float that by the powers that be in the judiciary and?
Well, that, we'll say, is the great puzzle piece here. Can we get through the court with an amended court order and through the council with a resolution in time for candidate registration in February? That's the timing issue.
And Council President Cannon, I, we're going to rush it through to get it in front of Judge Maddox as soon as the county council approves it. So if, in two weeks, the county council approves it, we will get it before Judge Maddox immediately. In fact, we will alert him that this issue is coming and that we need some emergency relief from the court.
Okay, all right. Then what we'll do, we've had a review, we appreciate that. What we'll do, at our second meeting in November, we'll bring it back, and we'll see what the final product is, and then we'll take a vote from there. So we'll do it as a resolution instead of a work session.
I can do the analysis pretty quickly on this, for that one area, you know, revamp all the numbers at the end of tables.
Okay.
Just a suggestion, Mr. President, I don't know if we, obviously, this, we, the reason why I have seven maps is, seven districts is because of the lawsuit. I don't know to what degree we've had meaningful outreach back to the folks who brought on the lawsuit, but certainly, I think it's important to have good, you know, communication back to be able to say that, hey, we are following through here, this is a technical change, and to make sure that they feel respected and heard.
Yes, the ACOU is aware of all of this.
Okay, yes. And the parties, okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Okay, thank you.
Next topic on the open work session is the repeal of a restaurant requirement for liquor We have Mr. Richard Duvall, and we have Jennifer Jordan, Chair of the Board of Licensed Commissioners.
I'm not sure what that is. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. I know that you have communicated through emails with the council members, and I think the council has your thoughts, and I know that we do have a copy on the table from Mr. Hastings in reference to having reviewed square footage, et cetera, but I'll let you open the floor here. When you last came here, I guess the condition that we had concerns about were the restaurant requirements, trying to decouple that from the liquor store, and, you know, giving you time to evaluate, if relevant, sizes of the liquor stores. Maybe, maybe locations, even though I don't really see that as a relevant part of this decision-making process, but I'll give you the floor and let you go ahead and give us an overview.
Okay, fantastic. So as.
Let the, for the record, so that you can state your name.
Sorry, thank you.
Let me lay out, let me lay out what we just got on what the legislation.
You need our names for the record first?
Yes, thanks.
Okay, Jennifer Jordan, Chair of the Board of Licensed Commissioners, Wycomico County.
Thank you.
Richard Duvall, Attorney for the Board.
Okay. Get closer to the mic, if you could, please.
So what I did, so you knew what you were looking at, was to provide two copies of the proposed amended legislation. So one of them has the changes. So the language that's being removed from the current statute is in brackets, and the language that would be added is in bold. And essentially, what would happen would be the requirement that the Class A package store license holder also hold a Class B restaurant license. That requirement would be removed. Then added would be, in response to Mr. Hastings' questions last time, is the bold language that you see about two-thirds of the way down the page, which would have this council decide maximum square footage of one of these stores and fill in the blank that I've left in that language, so that no store could be in excess of X square feet. The state standard statewide is 10,000 square feet. That 10,000 square feet includes basement space, storage space, and office space, not just the retail space. In the email, I gave you some numbers that Mr. Hastings also had requested. The beer and wine store that's in the Twilley Center that I think you're all familiar with, I think the number is 9680. But approximately, when you look at the diagram of the store, about two-thirds of that is retail floor space, and about a third of that is backspace. The dispensary, which was specifically requested, I had initially given an estimate. If you look what I said, we believed it was in excess of 10,000. I got a call, I gave that information on a Friday, I got a call from Mr. Laws, who's the attorney for them, who had I requested this information previously, but time constraints had to get it to you. That was wrong, that estimate. The retail, the retail area at the dispensary is about 4,800 square feet, but there is a basement and there is backspace. I don't have those numbers. If it was a store that we were licensing, we would have to count that space towards the 10,000-square-foot limit. But the dispensary, as I indicated, is not subject to that law. If they wanted to have a larger store, that law would not apply to the dispensary.
So the dispensary could, like, take, like, the Acme Grocery Store, for instance, and just fill it with liquor and sell it?
Theoretically.
Theoretically, yes.
Yeah.
They're not bound by the 10,000-square-foot requirement.
Okay.
So the other numbers are in the email. I mean, I'm happy to discuss them. The, there's a beer-wine off-premise store that I think you're aware of, that's in the Walmart South Shopping Center. That is 4,522 square feet. The Class A beer-wine and liquor license at The Hoppers is 1,132 square feet, and...
I mean, to be, for clarity, I guess, you, just so everyone's aware and you're paying attention, or that they're paying attention to what you're saying here, the difference between having retail space, space that you can sell things at, compared to space that is for storage or for other, you know, other needs, office space or anything like that. The main thing that we really, or that I brought up that I think is of biggest concern that we've heard in the public is, they just don't want to walk into another alcohol, you know, liquor outlet, warehouse place.
Well, to give you an example, the best example in the county is the store at the Twilley Center. That's about as big as they can get under the state law. Now, I want to, I want to make a clarification on the state law. There is a provision in the state law that allows the board to approve a request for more than 10,000 square feet, but more steps have to be taken. And the executive director of the Alcohol, Tobacco, Cannabis Commission at the state level has to write a report indicating that that's not an inappropriate size for that store, where it's located, et cetera, what kind of neighborhood it's in, and so on. That's another reason why it would be prudent if the board, or if the council decides to proceed on this, to have this provision that limits it to a number, because if, if you're at the state level, you could have theoretically 10, 20 years from now, a package store that's larger than 10,000 square feet. But if you put the limit in this statute, then it'll be limited that way. I should have said earlier that the three-store limit for the Class A package store is retained in this, in this proposal as amended.
Yeah, well, so we don't always focus on really what the issue is at the table tonight.
Right.
It is just whether or not we're going to decouple restaurants.
Right.
Period.
That's the issue. That's the issue.
That's it.
Yes.
We're not going to be adding any more liquor stores in Wycomico County, it's just simply deciding whether or not to remove the restaurant provision. I know that Councilman Hastings, at our last meeting, had suggested that he would like to also, since this was part of the discussion, he would like to see a limitation on the square footage. I think the council can consider that, I don't have any problem with that, I don't think anyone else does. And Councilman Hastings, you have said in your email that you would be recommending a maximum of 3,500 square feet, is that correct?
Yeah, so I just did, looking at specifically the area, the retail space that is, and I don't want to misuse the terms, I'm going to be very clear on this, the area where liquor or products within a given store could be sold within the current dispensary systems, within our current dispensaries right now, the retail space out of the numbers that we had received and gotten back from them of just that, I now notice that they have a basement, they have office space, et cetera, et cetera, but the Acme Shopping Center, that's 4,680 square feet, the Tillman Road, 3,039 square feet, and then the East Naylor Mill Road at 2,388. If you were to average those together, the average of those three would be 3,369 square feet of strictly retail space. I think, I don't think it is, I don't think we, if we are going to make further changes, I don't, I want to make sure that we do not have any more further liquor warehouses or other, we do not need any more alcohol, and I fully agree with Councilman Holloway on that. So setting an average, a maximum of, say, 3,500 square feet for specifically the retail space, I think would be reasonable to give, you know, to make sure that folks know that we're not going to, you know, be inundating another community with more alcohol than they.
It's your council's call.
And the 3,500 square feet, Josh, that's not going to impact the Waverly-Acme Shopping Center that's currently 4,680?
That's a county, right?
Yeah, that's just the current dispensary, so using that as a...
Just making this clear.
Yeah.
All right, and the second part of this was that you had said that a regional approach might be to state that there could not be more than one of the three Class A licenses located in any more than one of the seven single councilmatic districts. Other words, each store would have to be in a different councilmatic district, is that correct?
Yes.
Is that okay with the council in that stipulation?
I just want to make sure that's not going to pull anyone out of compliance, right?
Yeah, that's the thought that I had.
That's a question.
Do we know that they're all in different districts now?
Based on the...
Well, I've got Frank's maps right here.
I mean, you could, I'm just, I'm just...
There's only two private ones, right? We only have two current.
Two current.
There's two current.
There used to be three.
We have three licenses, there are two currently.
And where are they located?
So you have one on Nanicoke Road.
Okay. Oh, that's in the...
That's in the Food Lion Shopping Center.
Con Square.
Pecan Square.
Yeah.
And then you have one on South Salisbury Boulevard, Hoppers, in the Hoppers complex.
One, seven, two.
And then for transparency, we have our board meeting coming up in November, we have received a completed application for the third outstanding Class A beer/wine and liquor license. So that will come, that will be becoming, that will be coming before the board at our November meeting, so that someone has applied to have that third available license, which then, if the board does go ahead and grant them that license, then we are filled back up with the three that the county has allowed.
I have a question. We're talking about footage, I'm looking at the work session, it said repeal of restaurant requirements for liquor license. Now, the one that turned in was Booney's, correct?
Correct, yes.
And he had a restaurant, you could go get food, correct?
He did, yes.
So why are we changing the restaurant requirement? Why are we changing that? Because what I see happening is that you're opening the door for other places to say, well, this person doesn't have to have a restaurant, why do I have to have a, not have a restaurant? That's anybody, because it wouldn't be fair to that person. So I believe you're opening the door because every year liquor comes up and I have to be honest with you, I don't trust what's going to happen next year because it's going to open the door for somebody applying for a liquor license. And you might say, no, it won't, but there need to be treated fairly if another store wants a liquor license and we give this person that's applied, that doesn't need, wanted a restaurant, what will happen?
I can help you with that. The only one of the two current licenses, Shani, actually wants the restaurant. He doesn't see that, it's Hoppers, he doesn't see that as a negative at all, he really wants that. It actually started out as a restaurant, he was glad to see that he could get a license with it. So he's not compromised by this at all.
But why are we repealing this requirement?
Because we felt, the reason it's here at the tables, we felt that it was antiquated. We didn't realize, we didn't understand how, whether or not you had a restaurant tied to a liquor store made any difference as to what was happening in Wycomico County. It was an antiquated system that said at one time you should have a restaurant, but the real question is, what relevance does a restaurant, does a restaurant have to selling liquor to begin with?
Let me ask you a question. The, I don't know if you can tell me this or not, but the restaurant that's, not the restaurant, but the liquor store that's applying right now, will they be in compliance?
I'm sorry?
Will they be in compliance if we decide to...
So, just so we're clear, anyone who is currently applying right now for that third license has to have a restaurant?
No, no.
Right.
Talking about the districts.
The districts.
If we keep this...
I believe so, yes, they would be, based on, I believe, based on the maps that I just observed, it would meet Mr. Hastings' requirement that we'd be, it would be on the north end of town.
It's on the north end of 13, across from this.
Yeah, so it's, they're not near the others, yeah.
All right, so we're looking at, in order to move forward with the decoupling of the restaurant, we're looking at putting a limitation on the square foot, 3,500 square feet, and making sure that any of the three classes are in separate districts, correct?
And may I just, so that clarification comes for 3,500 square foot retail space, but the location itself could be more than that, taking into account office space, storage space, basement space, as long as the retail space is 3,500 square feet, okay?
Yeah, that's...
So let me just, in light of that...
We'd have to change.
This is going to have to be rewritten.
Yeah.
Because I tie it back to the state law that says you have to count all the other space.
Right.
But I'll rewrite it to limit it to the retail space aspect. If that's the intent of the council.
Okay.
Integrate the districts.
Yes.
Integrate the districts.
And the, yeah, well, the district requirement, yes.
So I made some statements, some public comments. First of all, I don't agree with your analysis, this isn't just about decoupling a restaurant license, I mean, we know where this is going, it's been said by the county executive, that's where she wants it to go. Former delegate Carl Anderson made the statements, we opened the door, we've also walked through I'd like to see the council reverse their decision, and this was a consensus vote, it wasn't a vote, it was just a consensus, reverse their decision on the 7:00 AM golf course letter, we can send another letter changing that back, and I'd like to see the council take a consensus again before Josh is questioned to say whether we want to even send a letter and go with this, before we do anything else. I appreciate that, Councilman Holloway, but in order to do that, you would have to make that request before the meeting so that we change the agenda, because the agenda only shows that we're talking about decoupling a restaurant. If you want to propose this for something, if you want to propose this for two weeks, that's fine, but the work session today, as publicized to the public, was in reference to the decoupling the restaurant. I don't want to stray from that. We're not straying from it. I want to say, yeah, you are, now you're talking about revisiting the topic from two weeks ago. If you want to discuss it in two weeks, we'll consider putting it on the agenda then, but I don't want to get off track. Well, we can get off, we can do the restaurant now, if we want to take another consensus on that, because that's what's on the agenda tonight, the golf course, if we want to put that off for two weeks, which we'd already made the decision on, we can do that in two weeks. Yeah, I don't even agree with that. Is that the right, is that the right process, Laura? Well, let's talk about it later, I don't want to get off, we've got a lot of people here waiting to move on, I don't want to add more work to the agenda that we haven't even scheduled. Are you asking us to vote to do this? I mean... I'm taking a consensus on this right now, on the restaurant provision, yes. Because that's what's on the agenda today. Now, are you taking a consensus on sending a letter promoting this to the delegation or not?
We can do that when we get the text back.
It's premature right now, and what we're trying to do is give them something to work with, am I right? And...
Taber, you want to proceed?
And we can also, we can do the letter as well, we can do a consensus for the letter as well, it's fine with me. We need a consensus, Shani.
I'm not voting for it.
Councilman Harris?
Yes.
Vice President Merritt?
No.
Councilman Holloway?
No.
Councilman Hastings?
Yes, with these amendments.
Okay, Councilman Harris?
Yes.
And the chair votes aye, so we'll move forward with the decoupling of the restaurant, and I thank you very much.
And we'll get that language, the new legislation with the language in it to you.
Please do, yeah.
Yep, absolutely.
Mr. President, just on that, just 10 seconds, the only thing, the only other question there is, to, sensitive to other council members' points here, they strongly feel like this is a way to open up more liquor licenses in the future. Is it helpful to spell that out? I mean, obviously, the process is, we don't determine licenses, there is concern about the credibility of the institution that allows more licenses, obviously, that has to go to the state. Is it worth spelling out in the language that anything, any approval for more licenses would have to come before the county council? Is that needed, is necessary? I'm just only bringing that up, obviously, I think it's implied with just process, but is it...
It's not implied, you, well, it has to come before the council in order for a letter to go to a delegate.
For more liquor stores.
Yes.
There would have to be a requested legislative change, and that request would have to come before you.
That I'm not for more liquor stores, I'm completely happy with the amount.
We are not advocating for more.
That's what I want to make sure that people understand.
But you did say, when I asked that question at the last meeting, I said, will you ever come back for that? And you said, I'll never say never, so...
Well, you can't.
Well, any, any smart person is going to say, never say never, you're not going to hold that, so...
It's going to come, it's going to come across this table before it goes anywhere.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the discussion of the U.S. Immigration and Customs Enforcement ICE 287G, the warrant service officer mode. I believe we have Mr. Illuminati here and we have our sheriff, Mike Lewis, here, thank you for being here tonight, Sheriff.
She appeared.
Does this have a PowerPoint for tonight? Do you have it on flash? Do you have it on flash? Oh, yes, I know what you're talking about, yes. No, I have mine.
Oh, boy. How you doing, Andrew?
Good evening, Mr. Council President, council members, believe.
Do you need to set up?
Yeah.
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 He did?
Yeah. How you doing?
All right.
That's what we were this time last year.
Been right behind it.
That's what we were this time last year.
If you could just, for the record.
Yes.
Is he, he's okay, right? He's still recording? We're still good?
Yes.
Five fourteen? Yeah, if you could just state your names and positions, that'd be great.
Andrew Illuminati, Department of Law.
Thank you.
Mike Lewis, Sheriff Wycomico County.
Julie Giridino, County Executive.
All right, thank you all for being here.
Yes.
Andrew, we'll let you start.
All right, thank you very much. So, put together a quick PowerPoint that covers developments since the last council meeting. So here is the federal law that authorizes the 287G and the three different models of 287G that exist, the jail enforcement, the task force model, and the warrant service officer. The county was exploring the warrant service officer program. And then this is an overview on how the Maryland jails operate, because I want to clarify that the Wycomico County Jail operates differently from other jails throughout the state. And so there's first, a division of corrections. That's operated by the state. There's 18 prisons and pretrial release centers throughout the state. ECI down in Somerset, that's an example of a state-operated prison. Then the correctional services article provides for local correctional facilities. Local correctional facilities are operated by the county in which the facility is located. Oversight of the local correctional facilities can be either a county's elected sheriff or an appointed warden. The Wycomico County Detention Center is an example of a local correctional facility. The, now, law enforcement officers, police officers, have a different training standard than correctional officers. So those two terms, for purposes of analyzing a statute, are not interchangeable. So the next is, what is the state law as to a local correctional facility entering into a 287G agreement? The correctional services article explicitly provides that prohibition on immigration detention agreements does not prohibit a 287G agreement in the correctional context. Therefore, Wycomico County can enter into a 287G agreement and not violate the state law. As we were stating earlier, there are, if you look at the blue, those are county government-run detention centers, therefore, they are not operated by the sheriff. And what is in gray are the sheriff-operated detention centers. Additionally, you can see there are Ws in Js. The Ws represent the counties that are operating the warrant service officer program, and the Js are the jail enforcement model. And so that's on the western part of the state, the northern part of the state, and in the southern part of the state. So the key here in looking at this is, the only counties that are operating currently a 287G agreement are where the sheriff operates the detention center. So since the October 7th council meeting, on October 15th, the Maryland Attorney General Anthony Brown released guidance for state and local law enforcement agencies that addresses the application of state law when interacting or partnering with federal law enforcement agencies. This guidance was broad and addressed a multitude of joint agreements that local law enforcement agencies have with federal agents, warrant task force for fugitives, crossover deputization with the DEA. It covered everything, but there wasn't specifically a section that addressed ICE. And so the October 15th guidance explicitly addresses that law enforcement officers cannot participate in the 287G agreement in their capacity as a law enforcement officer. So if they're operating as a law enforcement officer, and they're not in that correctional context, then they cannot participate in the 287G. The guidance asserts that Maryland Criminal Procedure Article 5-104 does not provide Maryland officers the authority to assist in civil immigration enforcement. The guidance further declares that 5-104, the criminal procedure article's prohibition on participating in civil immigration enforcement applies even when Maryland officers are operating under an agreement with federal authorities. And for the first time, the Attorney General explicitly enumerated that this include an agreement with ICE under Section 287G of the Immigration Nationality Act to perform the functions of an immigration officer. So this is the first time, this is new guidance. So after October 7th, the presentation was as discussed, the sheriff's office was originally going to cross-designate deputies as correctional officers to fulfill the 287G duties, and that was due to the current reduction in correctional officers at the jail. The parameters of the cross-designation were to be enumerated in a memorandum of understanding between the detention center and the sheriff's office, and that's where the last work session left off. Eight days later, this guidance comes out, and the Department of Law's conclusion based on that guidance from the Attorney General is that the October 15th guidance concludes that law enforcement officer engaging in cross-designation, excuse me, for the purposes of immigration enforcement opens the county and the individual law enforcement officers to litigation. Further, if the Wycomico County Sheriff's Office oversaw and operated the jail, so if it was not shaded light blue, back on one of the earlier, on the map slide, but shaded light gray, then the sheriff's deputies could effectuate the duties under 287G in accordance with the correctional services article. However, because the detention center is operated by the warden, and because the sheriff's office does not operate at the detention center in light of the new guidance, the sheriff's office cannot participate in the 287G program and be cross-designated. And so as a result of the October 15th guidance, the county can engage in a 287G agreement at the jail, but only utilizing correctional officers and not law enforcement officers. So this was new development since the last council meeting. I wanted to present this to you tonight. I previously shared it with the sheriff late last week to explain and to offer ways that he could get additional clarification. So if there are any questions, I'm happy to address them, but this is, this was new guidance. This was not guidance that was previously issued earlier in the year when the Attorney General issued ICE guidance.
I guess the question is, is the detention center going to take part in 287G?
I believe that's a policy question that the, by law, they could as a policy question.
Who can answer that?
I mean, I can go ahead and answer that. So I kind of assumed that the sheriff was going to say what he needed to say first before we got into any decision-making. Is that okay?
Do what you want to do, just ask the question.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, I don't mind answering. Are you okay if I answer that question?
Sure.
So as it stands right now, with the sheriff and his deputies being removed out of this equation at this point in time, per this guidance, what we are looking at and what we are concerned about even more is that I've kind of caught wind that the General Assembly might end up taking out the fact that correctional officers may do this and changing state law. So what I would like to do in this is potentially table this until we get through session. And if we get through, excuse me, if we get through session and there have been no changes and correctional officers have the ability to do it, I would revisit that with the Director of Corrections at that point in time.
Sheriff Lewis.
Mr. President, distinguished members of the council, I deliberately stayed out of this room tonight, so everybody seated behind me did not feel threatened or intimidated, and they could speak freely before each and every one of you tonight in their public comments. I thought that was very important. As you notice, I did not arrive until after public comments were over. We've just seen a PowerPoint presentation presented by our county attorney, Mr. Andrew Illuminati. You saw firsthand why Maryland's Attorney General has made it very difficult, if not impossible, for our county executive, working with my office, to move forward to further protect the American people. A partnership that would continue to prioritize public safety over Maryland politics. A collaboration that respects the constitutional rights of all of our citizens, not just our illegal immigrants. Instead, Governor Wes Moore and Attorney General Anthony Brown, collaborating with a long and distinguished list of Maryland lawmakers, have successfully passed legislation, new laws, and regulatory practices that further impede enforcement of our federal immigration laws. Furthermore, for the second time this year, Attorney General Anthony Brown recently fired a warning shot across the bow of every law enforcement agency in this state, warning law enforcement, county leaders, and municipalities of the civil, and yes, potential criminal consequences should we choose to cooperate with Immigration and Customs Enforcement or ICE. A warning shot that once again was designed to further impede or intimidate those considering entering into a 287G agreement with ICE. My fellow sheriffs and I have always been encouraged to collaborate and work with other federal law enforcement agencies such as the FBI, the DEA, the ATF, and our HSI partners. In fact, we have Wycomico County sheriff's deputies currently deputized by these federal agencies. But we are witnessing Maryland politics at its best. Sadly, we are in the midst of what has become one of the most challenging situations we have ever faced in our law enforcement careers. For four years, under the Biden administration, we had no borders at all. Our southwest faucets were wide open, and tens of millions of illegal, undocumented, unchecked, unvetted illegals entered our country in violation of our own sovereignty. This failed disastrous policy created what we see now, a humanitarian crisis of biblical proportions, which has now created a homeland security crisis for our nation. Meanwhile, Maryland has become a Disneyland for illegal immigrants, providing attraction and free rides while costing taxpayers billions of dollars. Maryland's Instate Tuition Act will make things much worse, attracting even more illegal immigrants to our state. The politicians, including the governor and leaders of the Maryland General Assembly, are advocates for illegal immigrants promoting amnesty and sanctuary policies. We have an Attorney General who has never attended a single Maryland sheriff's or Maryland chief's annual professional development seminar where we could learn the latest laws. Not once has he attended our monthly sheriff's or chief's meeting conveniently held at different locations across the state to accommodate everyone. Instead, we currently have a contentious and almost adversary relationship with our own Maryland Attorney General. I truly regret that. This memorandum of guidance issued by Attorney General Brown changes nothing for the men and women of the Wycomico County Sheriff's Office. We know how to do our jobs. I've been doing it for 41 years now. Perhaps I should send him a memorandum of guidance on how to be an Attorney General who fights for the people of Maryland, fights for the victims of violent crime, fights the key to violent criminals behind bars, and speaks out against violent crime that currently plagues Baltimore City, Prince George's County, and Montgomery County, to name a few. Instead, again tomorrow, much like today, I'll see the usual one-to-three press releases from Attorney General Brown, where he's joining another 17 to 19 attorneys, the minority, by the way, across the country suing President Trump yet again for doing what the majority of the American people voted for him to do. Not to mention the crippling effect this humanitarian crisis has had on our healthcare system, our public education system, and the enormous cost to our criminal justice system. Well, enough is enough. We are now working around the clock, including the deputies in this county, to combat the Mexican cartels, cartels that have now placed a $50,000 bounty on the heads of American law enforcement and a premium on the heads of Immigration and Customs Enforcement officers. These cartels have been running rampant and are now deeply entrenched throughout the United States. Now, as President Trump attempts to hold these cartels accountable, as he attempts to do what no other president's been willing to do for the American people, the cartels are now pushing back. For decades, we've subliminally allowed them passive ingress into and passive egress out of the United States. No more, not under this administration. In closing, our decision to currently stand down or withdraw our intent to pursue the 287G program here in Wycomico County does not come lightly. We have reached this decision for no other reason than to protect Wycomico County from potential civil and criminal sanctions being imposed by our own Attorney General. This decision will not affect the daily operations of the Wycomico County Sheriff's Office from responding to calls for assistance from ICE, HSI, the FBI, the DEA, the ATF, or any other law enforcement agency. We must protect our police officers and our agents, and we will respond to their calls for assistance. We must not allow Wycomico County to be a safe haven for those illegally entered in our country. We must not allow another illegal criminal alien to commit the kidnapping, rape, and brutal murder of another Mariner like Rachel Morin of Harford County, a young mother of five. We must not sit back and wait. I must fulfill my lawful duty to protect the citizens of Wycomico County. I must protect those visiting and working within Wycomico County, and I will do so as authorized under the applicable state and federal laws. For those reasons, I must now consider taking the people's calls into the federal judicial system to seek justice on behalf of all Mariners, especially those who call Wycomico County home.
Thank you. Any questions? I'd have to say, you know, based on what I'm hearing, Sheriff, I have 100% support for you as our leader in law enforcement and public safety in Wycomico County. I've known you since 2006, and I've worked with you since 2006. I've always had a lot of respect for you, your opinion, and how you run the county and how you run your department.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Certainly. But it appears to me tonight that as far as with Mr. Illuminati's advice and what you're saying here as well, that the matter of 287G at this point in time in Wycomico County is really a moot point.
That's correct.
And we'll be going no further at this time.
That is correct.
Again, thank you all for being here. Any comments from council?
To say that I know the correction, the detention center has always had problems with having correctional officers.
Ma'am.
So if the correction facility takes on this 287G, how would it affect the operations of the detention center, which is already understaffed?
Sure. Based on the warrant service officer model, there's really not much that changes in what they're doing, so it's not really an added burden to what the officers are currently doing. So they're already there, they're doing intake, they would end up serving another warrant, and then they would hold the person in the facility for an additional 48 hours until ICE was able to be there. And just one more second. I also want to say too that it is, we've actually had to release people back into the community, so ICE is short-staffed. So there have been a few that have been released due to the fact that they weren't able to be picked up, and, you know, so that 48-hour hold could have protected, you know, people in this community, and we didn't do that. And to me, that's a failure on our part. But for right now, until I know what the General Assembly is doing, we do need to put this on the back burner until we get through session.
I have another question.
Yes, ma'am.
Sheriff Lewis and Executive, have you heard the testimony of some of the people that were here tonight?
Have I listened to every single person?
I heard it all.
Yes, and then, you know, one lady who was 78 years old was followed by ICE, and she was a white woman. And what has happened, some of the people who are legal are being stopped, and it's like fear and terror. They're scared to go out, and it traumatizes me, especially when you see things that's happening on the TV about kids being snatched from their parents, or their parents being taken away, you don't know where the children are, you don't know if the kids are ever going to see their families again. So that's what's concerning, I think, our community, is that we don't want to see what's on TV happen here. I think we were supposed to be getting criminals off the street, illegal criminals, and I think that is what we're supposed to do, not people who are doing jobs that we are not doing, because I know black people don't go no more in the fields and pick whatever they pick, watermelons and all that stuff. The Hispanic community, the Haitian community work in farm labor, and I think we should consider, make sure you check the people's criminal background. If they have not, if you can't prove they have committed a crime, you should help them and with other agencies, Hispanic agencies, Reverend Tucson's agency, to help them become a citizen, especially if they are law-abiding. Now, I agree if they're illegal, like you just gave an example, yes, but don't take people who are working and contributing to our economics and contributing, and good citizens of our country, because they've made loopholes so they can hardly become a citizen. That's my main concern. And I don't like being traumatized, seeing a Hispanic couple walking down the street afraid that ICE is going to come and snatch them away from their children. And this is what's happening, I think, to all of us here in our county, that we want it to be humane, not cruel. They don't identify themselves, they don't, they face covered up, because I know it would scare me half to death, and I have a bad heart. Look, y'all scared, scared me half to death if I see somebody coming to my car, all covered up, sunglasses, and I can't identify them. Who are they? Why they stopping me? You know? So this is, I'm just telling you, this is the main concern I have, and the main concern that the foreign countrymen that's come here to this country and producing jobs and are good citizens. So I think we need to consider that. And that's all I have to say.
Judge.
Yeah, just, I'll add on this. While we've been sitting up here, there's been a plane crash. You know, it's not a large commercial, it was with carrying.
Louisville.
In Louisville, right. That's likely the cause of the federal government not funding basic air traffic control. We're only a couple hours away from the federal government going into the longest shutdown in 250 years. I say all that to be able to say, as you all lead sheriff's office in the county, the good name that we put together with the folks that work here, that are employed here, in the sheriff's office, in our local law enforcement, in the county employment, let's make sure as we go forward that we're not sullying the name of Wycomico County with the dysfunction of the federal government. And I think that's something we're going to have to keep an extra eye out on and be more thoughtful on. So I just want to, I appreciate your leadership, and I appreciate you all thinking for this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And thank you, Councilwoman Shields. I heard everything you said.
Very well, sir.
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely.
All right. Thank you again, we really appreciate you.
Thank you, sir, absolutely.
Entertained emotions adjourn. Second.
So.
When's the adjourn?